Good morning. Welcome to our last meeting of the year. We are here for the Legislative and Human Resource Resources Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, December tenth, and it is eight thirty, eight thirty-one. At this point in time, I will open up the meeting for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to address the committee at public comment, you have no more than three minutes.
How you doing, every? How you do? All right. How you doing, everybody? I'm Dee Jones, passionate entrepreneur and visionary. It's kind of crazy. It's the last Human Resource and Legislative Committee. Wouldn't be probably at all of the ones I can in twenty twenty-five still, though. But I like to speak about this year, so during the presidential campaign, I heard a lot of things like Donald Trump closed down six factories here in the state of Michigan. But as I heard that, all I could think is that Dee Jones helped the school district build six esports labs. Remember these numbers in the future. And so I hear that, and then I go to the CAA and I hear, look at all of the biggest buildings that we have in our state. And the DeVos place is the third, the Huntington place is the first. And I could think of an experience I had at the Huntington place this year. Actually seen Barack Obama speak, and I shook hands with Barack Obama this year at the Huntington place. And that's pretty unique, because I'm from Chicago. I'm left-handed, too. I think we got a lot of things in common. And I think my special, my purpose is here definitely special here on the universe. I was in Dubai a couple of years ago, and I was in Dubai. One of the Rothschilds was in the room with me. It was a crazy experience that somebody walked up to me and said, hey, one of the Rothschilds is in the room. I'm just like, oh, that's crazy. One of the powerfulest families ever to ever live, and they're super rich and everything else. And I'm just like, that's a crazy experience, and I'm never going to let nobody, regardless of their ethnicity or status or power, I'm never going to let any of that get to me. And I just want to always just remember that I got a special purpose here, too. And I could be powerful. I could be rich. But I could be ethical, and I could be equitable, and I can give back to my community, and I can create change, and I could be a leader, and I could be a pioneer. And as I earned this ten thousand dollar grant, and I was at this event, it was like all older ladies, like, I was like, it was like forty older ladies. It was just Dee Jones. And I was just trying to speak to the president of the Community Foundation, and I happened to run into Holly, who's the president of the Frey Foundations, which we know the phrase, they're a vital part of building all of the facilities that we have around here. And I got to eat lunch with the Frey Foundation and see Doug DeVos speaking, the old superintendent and the law professor. And it was just a cool experience, because I know that everything that I'm doing is going to affect laws, and it's going to affect society, and it's going to affect education already, which everybody in this room knows. But I think what I'm just really trying to say is that for the common good and the social good, this ethical equitable work that I've been doing is definitely going to have a social impact that's going to have effect on legislation, and it's definitely going to bring human resources back to Kent County and further on. So I'm very excited to explain to you guys this, my experiences and the things I've been through, because I'm definitely a special person. I know I'm going to change society one day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee Jones. When you shook President Obama's hand, did you tell him you had a better jump shot than he did or not? Okay, all right, all right. So do I. Is there anyone else that would like to address us at the public comment section? All right, seeing no one, we will close that portion of our meeting. Approval of minutes. I need a motion by Teal, supported by DeBoer. Any comments, questions, changes? If not, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, all those opposed, last meetings minutes have been approved. Next item on our agenda is from our medical examiner. Performance Measurement Review and Annual Report. Dr. Cole, Chief Medical Examiner. Oh, he is not in the building today, so all right, no problem. Do we want to? Are you okay with the presentation? Or, okay, let's go. I love it. Everyone hear me fine? So thank you for seeing us today and doing our performance review. I'm very excited. Been looking forward to doing this this year, as it's my first one as director since I got hired. I want to say to start with, our mission is we always aim to serve veterans in our community, to assist them in gaining the benefits they're eligible for, and for connecting them with resources in our community. And I want to show that we've been doing that very well this last year. When it comes to claims, we did four hundred sixty-six claims that were submitted. With the dollar awards that came in this year, we actually have a seven percent increase from last year. And I want to note that this is important, because we were only on a nine-month reporting, because we swish over fiscal year this last year. So we're seven percent higher than last year's twelve-month. That's really big, bringing in four point seven million dollars in federal money to our veterans that they can then, you know, pay for their rent, pay for their housing, pay for their electric, give them financial security in our county, and spend the money in our county. So that's really, really important. Second thing we do is through our emergency relief, which we actually have gone down this last year in veterans needing emergency relief, which I was looking at the correlation between the two of us getting so much money out in the community. They're not needing us as much to help pay for their rent and their electricity. We actually went down fifty-two percent from twenty twenty-three, which that's really exciting for us. We always, I mean, at the end of the day, if we could have a zero there for veterans not needing help, that would be super. Will it happen? No. But the lower we get that number, means the harder work we're doing getting them set up before they need the help, getting to them. So that's really exciting. Burials were down also by sixty-one percent. So we didn't have a lot of veterans passing away needing help with their burial allowances, things like that. So that was good for the year also. Over the last four years, I have been sitting, doing a study on our SSR funds to see where most of our funds have been going to, and it looks like most of it is for housing. Thirty-six percent of our SSR has gone to housing, to keep people housed, keep our veterans housed in the county. And the next part after that is food, to make sure that they are fed. And one of our goals is always to help end homelessness for veterans. And this shows that that is mainly what we've been doing with our SSR, is stopping homelessness, keeping people in their homes, keeping them fed, keeping families together. Very exciting stuff. We've been working very hard at that. We, we've been doing some surveys, getting them in from different people coming in. And we've been getting, I know this committee has always asked for different stories from the people we work with, the clients we work with. In the last couple of years, we've been trying to get surveys out to get people to give us those stories, to get that feedback to us. We finally have been getting that. And here are some of the quotes that are coming from them. We're, we're really respectful. They care for me. Thank, thank us very much. Excellently knowledgeable, kind. Our people are always there to help. My favorite is a little box with the, that is actually a card from a flower shop that was sent to us. And I want to tell you the story specifically about this one, because it, it kind of touched my heart. It's kind of important. We had a spouse who is a surviving spouse. The husband had passed away, Agent Orange, that type of stuff. The daughter, the mom needed, she was having Alzheimer's. She needed to go to nursing care, couldn't afford it. The daughter's trying to take care of her. Daughter was beside herself, couldn't figure out what was going on. They came in, called us. They sat down with one of our VSOs, Teresa Ergay, and she was able to find that they were eligible for what's called a DIC benefit, which pays them for the rest of her life, because her husband died to military cause. It allowed them to pay for their nursing care that this surviving spouse needed. Got her in her nursing home. She's thriving now. And as the daughter says, this is the first time now that she's been able to sleep, because she knows her mom is taken care of. That is what we really do in this office, is we want to give our veteran surviving spouses that feeling of real security. So other things that we have going on that we've been doing during the year is our different programs through Millet's funded and through an MVA funded programs. And what I've done on this slide, which I also gave in your Visio report, is the participation for different numbers of people that go to the different programs. And these numbers are all unique. Like, if you look at Veterans Rising, that's a hundred and sixty-eight. Those are new people, but then also these people referring to the programs. So there was a hundred and sixty-eight veterans that were gone to do different types of things, be it blacksmithing, rock climbing, you know, a lot of getting them in groups so they talk to themselves, so they can be with other people, so they're not separated. That's the worst thing for a veteran. Being a veteran myself, we tend to separate, and it's better if we come in as a group, and that's what these programs are for. And we've been really successful with them. Other ones that are on there are like Community Rebuilder, Disability Advocates. What those do is we help fund for like, if people need ramps inside their homes, they're in a wheelchair, they need a ramp come up. Community rebuilders will come in to build a ramp for them. We help fund that. So there's different things that they could do. If they need help refurbishing their bathroom to be able to be, have their wheelchair accessible to the bathroom, they'll come in and help do that. So we fund a lot of those programs like that with Senior Neighbors, Community Rebuilder, Disability Advocates. We also have, one of my favorite things is community, my community dental. We're running a uninsured veterans dental program with them, where they could come in and get emergency dental care if they have very little assurance or no insurance. And they've had, this last year, they had a hundred and forty-three participants that were able to come in. They, they were actually, that number is, should be higher, but because we hit the nine-month mark, they're actually booked further. They're booked next four months going, and they've been booked like that since last April. So they just didn't have enough time to get everyone in, so it's actually be a lot higher than that. But we're keeping people's teeth in their mouth, keeping the cavities going. It's, it's absolutely fantastic program down there. Not to mention Arbor Circle, that's for mental health and drug rehab counseling. And we got forty-one participants, fifty-one participants in that that are getting help staying off of drugs, stop getting away from that self-prescription, self-drug thing, you know what I'm saying? So that's very exciting. Lots of things going on. So at that, I wanted to make it short and sweet for everyone, so I want to thank you. And I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for their continued support for our office. It's always been your guys' support that has allowed us to keep this going. So thank you very much, and I want to open any questions. Well, thank you. I might be one of the first folks that actually, when I tell them less than ten minutes, actually kind of stuck it inside that, so. They, they harped me hard. Keep it under ten minutes. I was like, I'll keep it to about eight or six, let you guys do questions. I appreciate that. Commissioner Pakel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Ryan. Thanks for being here so much. Great presentation, and I'll echo the shortness as an appreciation here. On the report that we got in our packet, there was a pie chart about responses to the question, how did you hear about the veterans services? And I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about what that referral process looked like. And specifically, I'm thinking, are there areas that potentially could see increases in referrals that you're working on, places that our veterans are engaging, that you might be able to get in front of them to let them know more about that? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, yeah, that's no problem. So yes, exactly. That's one of my plans going into this next year, is when I was running to get hired for this job, I wanted to be able to go out to where the veterans are. And that's my plan going forward after January, is I'm going to start getting out to where the veterans are, so we can get those referrals coming in. Okay, so where most, and like you said there, where most people hear about us is word of mouth, from friends, from people who have been in. And that's where I want to keep building that further and further. Part of our overall new marketing plan that's going to be coming in is me getting out to the local VFW posts, American Legion post, going to where the veterans are, so they know we exist. One of my biggest overall goals and something, I've been here for fourteen years, and I hate to hear is when someone comes in and goes, we never knew you existed. I hate that phrase, and I want to kill that phrase as fast as I can. I want everyone in this county, every veteran, any family member, veteran, know that we exist, and I don't ever want to hear that again. So that's my plan, is to get out there, get our name out there, get those referrals going, and get people in.
That's great. As that takes place, I'd be curious to see a breakdown of how many are actual word of mouth versus, you know, there was a pamphlet at the VFW, there was a pamphlet at the doctor's office or something like that, because I think it could provide some really interesting insights on how people are being referred.
Absolutely, and I'll have that for next year's report. I'll get that in the report.
Great, looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Bujak.
Thank you, Chair. Really, really appreciate all the hard work that you're doing and your enthusiasm. I think your emphasis on trying to facilitate more understanding of the benefits and, you know, getting out there with that message is really, really important. For the benefit of those who are watching on YouTube or whatever, you mentioned SSR. And we love acronyms, but you didn't really say what that was. It's Soldier and Sailor Relief Assistance. And, you know, very, very important that we, you know, stay focused on their needs, especially the needs of the family members who are left behind. And the story you gave about the family that was able to get assistance, I readily recognize the importance of, you know, making sure that, you know, the widows of the soldiers are also benefiting from these programs. So thank you for reaching out to them also.
Thank you. All right, any other commissioners? Commissioner Hennessy.
I have appreciated the outreach that your department is doing, because every place I go, I seem to see you, whether it be a graduation ceremony for treatment court at sixty-third district, or the strong participation you had in Art Prize. And perhaps you can talk a little bit about putting that together and sustaining that for the length of Art Prize.
Oh, yeah, every year, we, we love the Art Prize program, and we, and let you know it is going on again this year. We have, we've got a new person running, heading it up this year. We love Art Prize. We love getting the veterans out to do their art and come together, and it's a healing process for them. And that's why it's super important to us, too, because it brings all those veterans together to do art through healing, and it's very important for us. Plus, it gets the word out about what we're doing and the good things that are out there. Gets their stories out to the community, too. When the community comes in, they get to talk to each one of the artists and hear their stories. It's really great for everyone involved. And like you said, you see us everywhere, and that's part of our goal. I mean, we're about to hire a new outreach specialist, so that's my goal going forward, is just to get us out even further than what you've already been seeing. So thank you. Thank you. All right, any other commissioners? I'd just like to thank you for the job that you do. I'm a sale member, and through you mentioning that you're going to be visiting the American Legions and the VFW posts, I just see when you walk into those places, these folks, you know, talk to you right away, they're engaging, they want to know, you know, are you a son? Are you a Legion member? You know, what you're, you know, if you're not, who served where? I mean, what a welcoming group of people that, again, when I, my son walks in there, the stories they all tell is, it's just fun. It's exciting. So again, what a great spot to reach out to our veterans and let them know the services. So, so thank you for that. Again, thank you for your service and the great, the great work that you do. So thank you very much. Appreciate you. Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda, we just flip-flop these, medical examiners. Dr. Cole.
Okay, so Medical Examiner report. First, a brief, and I think we have, what do I have, eight to ten minutes or so? I'll try to confine myself to that. At any rate, the first thing I thought I'd mention is our, our overall job as mandated by state law. So we have to examine certain kinds of deaths. And this includes unexpected natural deaths, that is, people who suddenly collapse and die, or people who are found dead at home and it appears to be natural. Basically, people who are not under immediately a doctor's care when they die. So we examine those. Most of them are quite elderly people with a long medical history, but some of them aren't, and I can go into more detail if needed. So all accidental deaths. So this includes falls, that's the biggest single group of our accidental deaths. People who are, could be at home, but they're elderly, or they're in a nursing home or some other facility. Where they fall, they get a hip fracture usually, and they just can't recover. Sometimes it's a head injury, but they just go downhill and die. Those are reportable to us. Second biggest group is drug overdoses. We did see a downturn in those in September, and I think that has continued. We haven't, don't have all of our data for the rest of the year, but of course, the year isn't over. But anyway, so drug overdose is number two, and it, it a few years ago passed car accidents as, as number two. So car accidents are now number three. Then, of course, we investigate all suicides and all homicides. Basically, the way we undergo these, or we go about doing these investigations is to, we have eight in medical examiner investigators who are contacted by the individual or individuals who are in charge of the deceased person when they're pronounced dead. So that's usually police or hospital people. So they call, they get one of our investigators. The investigator then goes to the scene if appropriate, and if possible. Sometimes people are injured and taken to the hospital and die. There's no scene for us. But anyway, they gather information, what they do, either from the scene and from people in charge of the individual. They then contact Dr. Start or me, we're the medical examiners. And we decide if an autopsy is warranted. In that particular case, we're doing about twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent of all of our investigations are, have autopsies, and the rest, we certify the death based on the investigation. Anyway, and if an autopsy is to be done, then the body is transported to our current morgue facility, which is at Blodgett. And then we perform the autopsy, do the death certificate, sign the death certificate, and testify if there's a court case or whatever. So that's our basic role. Very briefly, we are, I guess, underway to construct a new morgue. We badly need one. We've been in the same facility since, before I came. I think we've had the, the morgue at Blodgett since about nineteen eighty or so. And we get sewage overflows periodically, and it's very small. We have inadequate body storage and so on. And then there are some inefficiencies with our administrative staff, the main one of which is Brittany Richardson, who is our office administrator, who put together this PowerPoint. But there at the Health Department, she and her assistants, and then the rest of us are at Blodgett. So it's, we need to be all in one place. At any rate, I think I'll go on to the Performance Measure Review, and then I'd certainly entertain questions if there are any. And there are the two of us. Our strategic goals, again, as I've mentioned, to determine the cause and manner of death in cases required under the law. Our goals, which are internal, are to respond to a scene. If there is a scene, somebody's dead in a car crash or whatever in a house, to get there within an hour of being notified. We, our investigators produce a report, and it's an investigative report. It's separate from the autopsy. We want ninety-five percent of those case reports completed within two months. And the reason it may take longer than just a few days, for example, is we may be waiting on toxicology results. We may be waiting on trying to get more medical information on the deceased. We're contacting families for information. So there are circumstances under which it can take sometimes even longer than two months, but our goal is to get ninety-five percent of our reports completed. We have a three-month goal to turn around our autopsy reports. So in those thirty percent or so of cases that have an autopsy, we would like to complete that autopsy within three months of, or, excuse me, complete the autopsy report within three months of accepting the case for an autopsy. And so again, there, I can go into that in more detail, but because of limited time, I'll see if anybody has questions about it. Our metrics. Let's see, I think I've mentioned some of that. Provide response within Let's see, I think I've mentioned some of that, provide response within one hour of notification by our investigators. So we have two major case, types of cases. There's our overall cases in which we are contacted to, the cases that might be a, a medical examiner case under the law, not all of them are. So we get something like eighteen hu, yeah, I think it's around eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred cases called into us, of which we accept about fourteen hundred and fifty-six. The ones we don't accept are, are people who die maybe under hospice and the hospice nurse isn't sure what to do. So they'll call our office and we'll say, no, that's not a medical examiner case, you have to have the attending doctor sign the death certificate. And that takes a fair amount of time to sort that out, but that, those are, that's an example of cases that we don't accept. Of our three hundred scene investigations, we had a ninety-seven point one percent response within one hour. So we are above that goal. And then again, we want to publish our investigative reports within two months of acceptance. And we are at a ninety-nine point nine percent completion rate for that. Our autopsy reports, we're not doing quite as well, we want to complete the report within three months. I think as of now, because I've put on a big push to finish some of my reports, we're just in that ninety, we're in that range of completing, we're about ninety, I think eighty-eight point percent or so of our cases are completed. And actually, I see that ninety-one point two percent were completed. So again, those can be problematic if we're looking at, at toxicology results. Some of the drugs that are out there take special testing, which we have to send to a referral lab. And that, that turnaround can take a while. Our caseload, as you can see, it's, it's slight, the total caseload usually has slightly increased over the last ten years. Where, we've been at again around seventeen or eighteen hundred total cases, of which fourteen or fifteen hundred are accepted as medical examiner cases, and of that fourteen or fifteen hundred, about thirty percent are autopsy. So we have a number of demograd, quite a bit of demographic data, again, which will also be in the form of our twenty-twenty-three annual report. But our cases, you can see there, we break them down by ethnicity, by age. Of course, the older people are the biggest single group. And, you know, about two-thirds of our cases usually are males because those, again, our cases are largely accidental or unexpected deaths. And males are, tend to be big risk takers compared to women, so they're going to have a bad outcome more often. So one of the determinations that we have to make is manner of death. So the manner of death is basically a way in which the death came about, it's really not for legal determination. In other words, if we call a death a homicide, that doesn't mean the prosecutor has to prosecute it as a murder. But we make these determinations as to the manner, mainly for statistical purposes. The Centers for Disease Control uses our data to formulate, or to get an idea of the national rate of these kinds of deaths, and that can dictate or inform safety measures and so on. Give us an idea of what, what things are killing people. So, again, as in most years, about sixty percent of our cases are natural. Many of them are elderly people that don't get an autopsy. Thirty-one percent accident, and then suicides are somewhere a little, generally, slightly more than twice the, the number of homicides. And then we have a very small percent in which, after doing an autopsy and lab testing or so on, we still don't have a definite cause of death. And again, that, because I don't want to take up too much time on that, I can discuss that later. And then we have a, a small chart there on the right with, in graph form. Drug use, this of course has been a scourge of the whole country as well as Kent County over the years. It's interesting, the trend, about seven, eight years ago, in that realm, our main drug was methadone. Methadone is a narcotic that is used either for pain control or to help wean people off of heroin. And patients would go to the clinic and take, get too much methadone or save it up or buy it on the street, and they would overdose on it. Well, now it's fentanyl, it's been fentanyl for about three or four years at least. And so fentanyl is the vast majority, and most of that is coming in from Mexico through the drug cartels. And so I think that's the main point of this. So, last year we had forty-two cases of death involving children seventeen and younger. The ones that are like fourteen or fifteen and older, up to seventeen, they tend to die the way adults do. Homicide, suicide, of course, not too many natural deaths. But the younger children, a lot of, I, I would say the, the most striking cause of death in the younger kids is asphyxia. These are infants, and it's usually related to co-sleeping. And for many years, not that we all haven't done it, or at least I'm sure I did when I had younger kids. But, you know, you're not really supposed to sleep with your kids, because there's the possibility of accidentally rolling on them or, or they get rolled over face down into the covers and they asphyxiate. So that is probably the single most important, it is the single most important cause of death in younger children. Well, accomplishments, we have maintained for, I think, ten to twelve years. Our accreditation by the National Association of Medical Examiners, this is a program where this national organization comes in. Every two or three years, they send an inspector, and the other years, we, we self-inspect. But it's just kind of a standard of excellence for how we do our reports, how we do our work. And we've, again, because of our current morgue situation, which the, when the bodies are brought in, they're brought in right off of wealthy streets, so the neighbors can see bodies being brought in and so on. So there's a bit of a lack of privacy, and we're hoping that new morgue, well, we know with the plan we have for the new morgue that that would alleviate that concern. But nonetheless, we've been able to be, to maintain our certification. Unclaimed bodies are a problem that we have, where sometimes they're unhoused folks that die and that we can't find the family. It's not infrequent that we know who the family is, and they don't come forward or they refuse to do anything. And so then, we have a process with several funeral homes here where there's a small amount of state money that can be used just to at least have a wooden coffin and bury them. And so that's how we have to get rid of them. Or that's how we have to deal with them, excuse me. Yes, Gift of Life, so the organ harvesting people own this Gift of Life, they're out of Ann Arbor. They take whole organs when available, that means brain dead, beating heart donor, they can take heart, liver, lungs, kidneys primarily, and, but they have to get our permission to harvest them. So these people are brain dead, so they're officially dead, that means they're reportable to us. And then we, if, when we can, almost always if it's a, if it's a working organ, we okay the harvesting. They also take skin and bone and corneas, and that we usually cooperate with. It, it kind of conflicts with the autopsy, but we try to get around it and do the best we can and make sure that we're not missing anything. But we are the second county in the state, we're second highest be, behind Wayne County for donations. So we're very pleased with that, we've gotten some recognition from Gift of Life for that. We did generate two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. I didn't, because of limited time, I haven't gone into everything we do, but mainly our sources of income for the county are signing cremation permits and selling reports. So we have a charge approved by the commissioners for autopsy reports, for the investigator reports, and then a cremation permit, I think it's seventy-five dollars for that. And what we do, even if it's not a medical examiner case, if somebody wants to cremate their loved one, we at least look into it, at the very minimum, we look at the death certificate and make sure that there's no concerns the way the death certificate has been signed. In other words, if the person who signed, the doctor who signed the death certificate isn't a medical examiner, but they're putting down that the person died from an accident, that's illegal. We're the only ones, Dr. Start and I are the only ones that can certify any death other than a natural. So we just make sure there's nothing inappropriate, and sometimes with a little more digging, we'll, we'll determine that there is a concern about the death. And occasionally, we have pulled these people in for an autopsy prior to them being cremated. So we do have a system for that, and, and there is a modest charge for that. Well, our, up there, our future concern is getting a decent morgue facility. Besides what I mentioned earlier, one of the concerns that I have, I'm not a spring chicken. And really, neither is Dr. Start, although he's younger than I am. So one of these days, we're going to, we, we, we would like to be able to initiate succession planning. And my thought was, let's at least get ourselves into the new morgue and get it up and running and get the glitches worked out. And then I would probably step down and we'd look for, either I might work part-time or I might get booted, I don't know. But we would try to find a young person, hopefully somebody with some fire in their belly to take over this system, and it's, it's a great opportunity, in my opinion. But in our current facility, it just isn't very good. I think a young person that's out of training that's going to want to work in a top-rate facility isn't going to come here. Because they, they would expect a decent morgue. So those are some reasons why we're looking forward to that. I think, I probably, if I'm not over my time, I'm approaching it. So I, maybe now's a good time for questions if anyone has any.
Yes, I, I would like, as we all know on this commission, we've been, one of our number one priorities has been a new medical examiner's office. I just asked Al to just give a little brief update for those that might not have some of the information, so you just kind of know where we're at, commissioners.
Sure.
Thank you. Or with our lack of getting it going, you just realize we don't want you to leave, right?
Well, I'm not planning on leaving voluntarily, except for when I retire, and hope I make it to that point.
Great, commissioners, Commissioner Pahnstein.
Thank you Chair Burrow. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We've been talking about a new facility for you for a long time. It's now just been a few years, and for you to hold that, you know, accreditation on the facilities that you have speaks volumes of, of your work and, and your just persistence. So my, my question is just a general one. So on, on a homicide, when there is, or even a questionable death, two to three months seems more than quick enough for those reports to be complete, if they're going to be thorough. Where do you weigh in on when the bodies can be released? And what happens if something does come up and say, we've got to look at one more other thing?
So the question is, okay, when we do an autopsy, say a homicide in particular, and when do we decide that the body can be released? We try to take all the important evidence at the time of the autopsy. So if somebody were to die now, and say it's a homicide and they're brought in, we start cases, if they're there before two o'clock, we begin them and do them that day. So that would be done today. And we would take specimens, blood, hair, fingernail scrapings if it's a homicide, and photographs. We send any evidence, if there's a bullet, or certainly if there's clothing, which there usually is, we'd send that to the police. If there's a potential for sexual assault, we would do that sexual assault kit right then and there, turn that into the police. So usually, the body would be releasable, as long as there's a family to claim it and so on, the same day or the next day after the autopsy. We do want to turn that around because we know that families are very concerned, we don't want to miss anything. But that's why we take lots of specimens and, and at the, at the time of the autopsy, so usually within a day, I would say. Not as much, the question is how much time do I spend in court? You, you'd think there'd be a lot, but some cases, well, I'm going to answer the question first, and I can speculate. So court probably is about twice a month. And of course, most of it's here, we also do cases for other counties. But luckily, both in Kent and other counties, because of Zoom, we can at least, or I can at least, and my partner, we can testify from work or home or wherever. But probably, so if I were to drive downtown here from work, I'd say it's usually about four hours for an average testimony, but at, at most twice a month. Sure.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you Chair. Dr. Cole, thank you so much for your good work, and I may creep out my colleagues, but I find your work fascinating, and I would love to tour your facility if that is an opportunity.
Oh yeah, sure. I would say the best number, since we're just talking about it right now, seven, seven, four, seven, four, nine, nine. That'll get our onsite administrative assistant, and she can arrange, usually be in the afternoon when we're, when we're not doing cases. Yes, that's it, Elizabeth.
All right, Commissioner Hennessy.
Our administrators talked about this a little bit, can you, can you put out your crystal ball and tell us where the medical examiner office will be going in terms of medical education, the regionalization, and, you know, how we begin to plan out ten, twenty years, since it's taken that long to plan our, you know, to work with our current facility?
Well, I guess, in, in one way of saying, it size matters. So we would need, and, and we do have right now the plans that we've talked about and hopefully will be acted upon, would give us about a twenty to thirty-year projected space utilization. I, I, as far as teaching, I mean, what we do now, and I'd like to continue it, we get medical students who can take an elective time with us. Usually it's two weeks, used to be four, but we'll, we would take them for a month, if they wanted to. We also get some undergraduate students who are pre-med and, or pre-physician assistant or whatever, other medical areas that come in and observe. So I, it'd be nice to have, and we also get trainees, physicians who are, have graduated, who are training in such, really any specialty, emergency medicine, internal medicine, and so on, surgery. And they are allowed to do an elective with us as well. So it'd be nice to have actual space for them, like a desk or a small office. Now, they just come into the morgue, change their clothes, when they're done, they change their clothes back and go home. But it'd be nice to have if they want to do reading or whatever. So without getting into the weeds too much, it'd be nice to have space for students and we, and to, for us to continue to train students. We want a conference room, sometimes we have conferences with police prosecutors, or we have a teaching conference every month that we do now. Where we go over the cases and review them and look for quality of the pictures and, and that sort of thing. Consultations. So we'd like a nice, good-sized conference room. It would be nice, as Al mentioned, if we could It would be nice, as Al mentioned, if we could get an affiliation with MSU and some other schools. I think that's in discussion. And regionalization is a concept that the state has looked at over the years quite a bit, trying to have regional, right now in the state of Michigan, we have sort of unofficial regions. We cover Kent County and a number of other counties, some of the Ottawa County cases, and we get them from up north, some autopsies, even from the U.P., mainly from Sioux-St. Marie, Chippewa County. So it'd be nice to, you know, have maybe an official region where all the counties that are involved are putting money into the facility and support. So I guess those are some things, regionalization, teaching, having conference rooms available. Also, maybe I, we might use the conference room, and probably would. Sometimes families wanna come in, they just wanna ask questions and stuff. And right now, we, they come into my tiny office or Dr. Start's tiny office, and they're crammed in there. But it'd be nice to have sort of a more professional, healing environment for them to ask questions about their loved ones' deaths. So that would be maybe part of our conference room. I'd have to revisit the plans. I haven't seen them for a little while.
Commissioner Bujak.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Cole, you're one of the county's unsung heroes, working in the basement of the project. And I really, really hope that, you know, soon we have a new facility for you. Do we have any idea, like from concept to potential construction, when something might actually be built?
Well, I think certainly within a year and a half, two years, from the time we we actually get to move forward.
And I had one other question. You mentioned that within one hour of death, you're usually onsite. And I can't imagine that most people have seven-seven-four-seven-nine-seven-four-nine-nine as a ready number. Do you work with the Kent County Sheriff's Department through the nine-one? Do most people report that through nine-one-one?
No, they, we have what they call, it's an old-fashioned term, but an exchange. This is a bunch of operators. They contract also with some doctors' offices for emergency calls. So they are called when there is a reportable death by the police or hospitals, even nursing homes, those are the main ones. And they'll call the exchange. The exchange will then find one of our eight investigators, and usually, it doesn't take too long. And the respondent investigator then will call back to the reporting facility.
Wow, that's a lot more complicated than I thought, but it sounds like it works.
It'd be nice to be simpler. We've talked about having Kent County Sheriff dispatch for us, and they don't want to, for probably too much, I guess, too many calls. But, so we're always open, and I would remain open to other. It'd be nice to have a direct line into our office, instead of having to share a group of operators with doctors' offices. But maybe when we get into the new facility, we can kinda set that up better.
I look forward to that day. And I told Commissioner DeBoer, I'm gonna join her on that tour.
Sure, yeah. You're welcome to come over. It's all decorated for Christmas. We don't wanna be rolled into our facility, or rolled out.
Do we have any other commissioners' comments or questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Cole. I appreciate you coming today. All right, next item on our agenda, brought to us from the board office, appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees. Do I have a motion, please? Motion by Pakla, supported by Teal. Comments, questions? This will be brought to us on our organizational meeting on the third of January. Commissioner Hennessy.
I am curious. We did quite a push from Kent County in terms of Facebook news releases, you know, emails on the airport seat. And how many applicants did we end up having? And how did we handle that review?
There were forty-three, I think forty-three applicants on that. And there was Chair Korn Dyke, who chairs the Kent County Ford Airport Board. He went from the county seat to the business member one seat. So as the current chair, thought it would be nice to keep him in that seat, and then open up those county seats for potential board chair appointments on that.
Right. I would just wonder, at the media push we had, when, you know, with this small authority board, that we're keeping an incumbent, if the intent was to, you know, sort of favor an incumbent to begin with, why would we, you know, boost the hopes, the expectations of forty-two other people?
Well, I think we thought the process to open it up, Chair Korn Dyke did put his name in the first time as well, and then it was removed. And we thought it would be best to reopen that up, to make sure those resumes were included in there. And it's a board where we do get a lot of applicants. And a good number of them do not qualify, or what I would dare say would not be appropriate to put on that board based on their current experience. But obviously, we wanna encourage people to continue to apply for these boards and commission seats. These are not seats that people are favored forever to be in. So again, we wanna keep on encouraging them to put their names and their resumes in, because we do believe there's times where there will be turnover eventually, that we will need to be putting good applicants towards that position and many others.
How did you review the forty-two applicants?
Well, that, I reviewed, I had the resumes of the forty-two. And then I met with Commissioners DeBoer and Commissioners Green on solidifying Commissioner, Chair Korn Dyke to that member-one seat.
Thank you.
Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair Burrow. I just wanted to point out that I did consult with legal counsel and determine that there is not a conflict of interest with the appointment of my father, Dan Korn Dyke, to the airport board. There is not a financial benefit to either him or I, since it is a volunteer position.
Commissioner Bujak.
Thank you, Chair. Of all of the duties that we have as commissioners, I found that this particular request to participate in interviewing candidates for these commission appointments, to be one of the most important things that I've done as a commissioner. And I'm just amazed at the quality of the individuals that put themselves out there to come to the county to assist us with all this difficult work that we're doing, you know, in these various committees and commissions. And in some cases, we had so many qualified candidates. I mean, four out of four in one of the interviewing sessions that we had, we determined would be excellent candidates. And it's hard, it's really, really hard to, you know, say, you know, of all four excellent qualified candidates, which ones do you pick? And so, having gone through this process now a couple times, you know, I'm humbled by the responsibility. And I really appreciate being a part of this. And I think, as a commissioner, this is one of the most important things that we do as county commissioners.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Oh, and I did wanna thank all the commissioners that are involved in that process. I mean, it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort to review all of the resumes that are sent to us in advance, and then find opportunity to meet with the commissioners, to actually go through the interviewing process. That takes hours and hours. And so, thank you to all the commissioners who participate.
All right, any other commissioner? Commissioner Ponsdine.
Well, just add to Commissioner Bujak's comment, the two people to my left are the real ones that sort through these, get us together, and find a time when we all can come together. So my thanks goes out to them and their work in assisting this board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners' comments or questions? I'd thank Commissioner DeBoer and Teal for chairing the committee, and everyone at this dais right here that spent the time and energy to interview. Again, it is a lot of work, a lot of fantastic candidates, like Commissioner Bujak mentioned. And those decisions are very tough sometimes. And we do encourage everyone to continue to apply for these appointments. They're important. And again, it is good work. Commissioner DeBoer was fresh off of surgery and coming in and doing her job. And I know there's many others that have busy schedules and take time out to make these appointments and recommendations. All right, so that being said, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, all those opposed, that will go to full board on the third of January with our new group. Commissioner miscellaneous, is there any Commissioner miscellaneous? Commissioner Ponsdine.
Thank you, Chair Burrow. So I couldn't make the last full board meeting. I did have an opportunity to watch it from a hotel room on the live stream, so I got to experience that whole experience. But I was reappointed for a third year on the National Association of Counties Board of Directors. It was probably something I didn't wanna do. It does take up a lot of time, especially to attend the meetings that I have to go to. The cost to send me there isn't picked up by this county, it's picked up by another entity. So it gives me an opportunity to see a lot of really different things. This quarter's meeting was held in Sonoma County, where the new president of NACO resides. And, you know, when I go to these other towns and the meetings that we have there, you know, it's a great opportunity. You know, county government just isn't good here. It's an incredible governmental unit sector, I guess you could call it, too, of the way we deal with problems. And though the problems in Sonoma County, a lot of them are similar, there's other things. I mean, they control their water department and the drinking water of six hundred thousand people that reside in the area. They took us on tours of the damage from the Tubbs Fire, which is seven, eight years ago now. And, you know, they're the first ones to admit that, you know, when you've got a disaster plan, you really don't know how good it is until the disaster hits. And they were brutally honest, there were, you know, mistakes made. And that was one thing that they kinda stressed, is that, you know, they owned up to it. You know, you can't find, or tell people excuses of why this didn't happen. It just happened. And they didn't do it, but they've made adjustments. You know, I've met a lot of great people. Someone that started a charity after the fire came up to me when she saw the Michigan tag and said, I'm a Calvin College graduate. And I said, well, you know, it's the university now. And she did. But, you know, it's amazing, people that know Grand Rapids, know Kent County, and more so know the state of Michigan. So it's a great opportunity. I also got the tour. They're pretty much number one, two industry is agriculture. There was an assault during, you know, under the California Election Initiative law that they have. There was a proposal from an out-of-state special interest group that pretty much tried to put every single dairy farm out of business. It was fun to see all the groups that did come together in support of agriculture. I don't know if that would have happened in this county, but they beat back that proposal ninety percent to ten percent. And there's a lot of people that are proud. Sonoma County delivers a lot of goods throughout the, not just the state of California, but through the, throughout the United States. So, you know, I learned a lot. I can't, you know, give you a full report. I'd be here talking for, you know, for hours, but it's stuff that sticks with me. Being on that board gives me access to information and keeps me updated on what NACO's doing and what the plans are. So I did mention that I did get to stream the meeting. It was interesting. You know, it was a long meeting. I credit all of you for being there. I think everything possible that had to be said was said. The only thing that really, listening to it on a telephone screen, you know, the theme that I kept hearing is that, you know, we had one person on the zoo board that used the word bully during a meeting that was also contentious. You know, I've talked to that person several times. He just feels horrible. He said I misspoke. It was an emotional time, and the word just came out. And if he could change it, he could. But, you know, there was so much emphasis put on that one thing. I mean, I listen to public comment all the time. And in heated discussions, people do misspeak, say something that they wish they didn't. But to have that is kind of a rally call. I mean, the person that made that is a volunteer on that board, has donated money, provided services. And, you know, and then intertwined with that is that, you know, we don't trust the board. We don't trust Peter, and we've gotta rebuild those relationships. I'm doubtful whether that relationship, after what we put the zoo through, can be repaired. I mean, those are, some of those people are former county employees. Peter came in with a charge to do one thing, is that transform that zoo. That's something that the county did. We're not gonna give you any really direct money, so the only thing you can do is to grow your revenue through people that come to the zoo. And that's what they've done. And now they're being attacked for that. You know, the parking lot improvements that are gonna happen, I mean, that was a dangerous parking lot. My short time on the zoo board, I mean, we've got buses coming in, kids getting off those buses. You know, the new improvements to the parking lot that they're working on now is gonna make it a much safer, convenient place for people to park. And the zoo has been looking at other alternatives. I mean, why isn't there a transit bus taking people from around the area into there? I mean, they've asked and asked, and nothing's happened. And, you know, what the county did by taking that zoo over, I mean, I wish I could turn the clock back and show you what that zoo looked like when I was a kid. Smelly, small cages, you know, short of, you know, I mean, that's what Peter loves to thrive on, are experiences like that. But going forward, I mean, you know, I'm positive that, you know, everything that, you know, the zoo's gonna be doing is not only gonna enhance the community and the neighborhood, but the whole state. I mean, once again, last year, people from every state had a representative that came to that zoo. And I think that's something to be proud of. So I don't wanna rehash things, but yeah, we've got a challenge here, because right now, we've got the majority of the public feels that we can't trust the zoo staff or Peter. And I think those thoughts, however they got out or became our narrative, needs to change. So I'll just leave it at that and wish everyone, if you celebrate Christmas, have a blessed Christmas, Hanukkah, and all the other, you know, religious activities. I, you know, I hope you find time to get out, enjoy it with your family, and look forward to 2025, working with most of you here. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hennessy.
I'd like to ask, we received information on changes in our housing voucher program, and I have, you know, to learn more about that. One question that was raised with me yesterday was, with the housing voucher change, will the vouchers go to the person, and can they take them outside of Kent County? And, you know, just generally, I had read that MISTHA, there was a newspaper article that MISTHA was getting out of the housing voucher program, yet they're going to be a partner with us in this. And just a little bit more to elaborate on what's the changes. And if, and whenever we do funding, we always say the funding, you know, for the positions is contingent on it becoming, remaining available. And so what is the impact on employees?
While Jenny's walking up, I can say the answer's yes and yes to your two questions. And it would be news to me if MISTHA's not going to be in the housing voucher program.
Yeah, MISTHA has engaged in agreement with us to accept the transfer, so I don't, and they have a lot of vouchers across the state. I do not expect them, they have given no indication that they're gonna stop doing that program. And yes, the voucher belongs to the person, the renter. They can live right here in Grand Rapids, or in northern Kent County, or wherever they want. HUD gives them the voucher. They can live right here in Grand Rapids or in Northern Kent County or wherever they want. HUD gives them the voucher.
They can live outside of the county as well then?
Yep.
So the voucher belongs to the person?
The person, not the managing entity.
Okay.
Yep.
So the inspections on the homes and that type of thing will all be done through MISTHA?
Yes.
On the same kind of schedule as we used to hold?
Probably a more timely schedule even than what we had.
Okay. And the employees?
Yeah, we have two employees currently that are operating the program. We are working with Human Resources and KCCA to see if there's another position within KCCA or the county government that they would like to take on after they complete the transfer work. So HR has been a great partner with us on that piece.
So I could ask one more question. It would be like, it's, it's being said, you know, we've been told repeatedly from July on that, that there wasn't the money to support this, that it wasn't paying for itself. So when we accept grant funds, we usually, you know, have the budgets for the personnel, the benefits, that type of thing. So how did, how did this happen or what was the nature of not paying for itself?
So it's somewhat complicated, but the timing, HUD is not very timely in getting us payments. And because we operate as a relatively small program in a relatively small government department, we don't have a lot of other funds, in fact, any, to keep us whole while we wait for HUD. Other organizations that have a more complex housing system and program have more flexibility. And MISTHA is an example of that. They have brick and mortar housing. They have a wide variety of ways to keep their operations going when they find that they have a little bit of a slump in the revenue for housing choice vouchers. And they have a little more flexibility in their pay, benefits, spending that we, we're very, we're a little bit more limited in our flexibility when it comes to those expenses that help support the program also.
Commissioner Bujak.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to recognize Commissioner Ponstein for his leadership here at the county, at the state level, and now at the national level. Congratulations on your appointment to the NACO Board of Directors. You know, the influence that we have as Kent County Commissioners and the work that we're doing here certainly benefits the citizens of Kent County. But we are recognized through the MTA, you know, for our leadership at the state level. Commissioner Ponstein has served as the president of the Michigan Association of Counties recently and now is appointed at the National Association of County Commissioners. Puts Kent County at the national, on the national stage and our ability to bring this leadership and our style of leadership to the national level is just so incredible. So Commissioner Ponstein, I appreciate what you're doing. And I've been a member of the Michigan Association of Counties and National Association of Counties and I intend to support Stan and all his work and attend those meetings. And I did want to say Merry Christmas to everyone.
All right. Any other commissioners' comments? You took number one from me and that was to thank Commissioner Ponstein for his Mac and NACO involvement. He was vitally involved on helping us get four-year seats at the county level in the state of Michigan. And I think we all will appreciate that and all do appreciate that, especially next year this time. Instead of filing, we will be able to thank Commissioner Ponstein that we don't have to at that time. So again, thank you for that work. I also like to thank this committee. The new year will have some new committee structures. It's been a privilege to chair this the last couple of years. And what a great group of folks here that are involved and do great work, ask great questions. From my first two years on the board to my last two years on the board, this board and the folks that are on here are so engaged and ask great questions. And we don't have, very seldom we have people up there that we just don't say anything to. So again, I appreciate everyone of you here for doing that. And yeah, it's just the last meeting of the year. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Good New Year. And we will see you on January the third. Meeting is adjourned.